All right, good evening. This is the Tuesday, June 28th, 2022, regular reading of the Floodings in Borough. Planning Board meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, but adequate electronic notice that this meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Hundredy County Democrat and Courier-News newspapers honor about March 17th, 2022. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of the Borough of Floodings Municipal Building, located here at 38 Park Avenue and in the handicap accessible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provides the municipal clerkage distributed to all persons if any requesting copies the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is judicial proceeding and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to the judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get our own place to rise as you are able to reflect.
The United States of America, a sovereign republic which stands
I mean, if you could please call the roll.
Mayor Drager?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Daschmann?
Here.
Is Zinglehart excused? Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Bundy?
Here.
Is Giffenis excused? Ms. Whitesman?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Levitt?
Here.
Ms. Kaczynski?
Here.
Ms. McManus?
Here.
Mr. clerico?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
All right, thank you all. As always, the first item on the agenda for our meetings is a period for public comments. Have you received anything from correspondence?
Yeah.
All right, any members of the public wishing to speak? You can come forward at this point. If you're online, you can click on raise hand. Okay, seeing none, we'll move to item two on the agenda, mayor comments.
A couple things to mention. Okay, so when you read about it in the news, I think that's weird. The catalyst sign at the circle, I think they have kind of an oddness of the state DOT regulations. The part that says historic borough of Floodings is considered off-site advertising.
Off-site advertising for the borough.
Off-site advertising. So.
Wow, that is a very Jersey thing.
That's a very Jersey thing. So what we're doing, in fact, the township is doing this as well for their sign. And I think, you know, and I went down and had a meeting in Trenton three years ago about this. I thought it was settled, it came back up, they're getting ready to finish finally. So the borough is renting, leasing, like one square foot of the sign to bricks. We're like, we're to the end of time and that is a way around it. The town, like, so the township has a sign going up on 202 at Retro Road over at Self Storage. They have to do the same thing. So that's going on, there's no money exchanged, there's nothing else except that the borough then shows an interest in the sign. And again, like I said, I thought this was settled three years ago and I talked to the DOT afterwards. They thought it was settled, then they came back and maybe it's not. So really, the quickest, easiest way, rather than going back and forth, is we're gonna rent a couple of bricks while from the off of the sign.
So this is their DOT approval?
It's a DOT approval.
Wow.
Yeah. And so it's kind of like, so we put its ordinance because we're technically entering it to that contract with them. And so it's, but I don't know what brick it'll be, but if you have a favorite, let me know and I'll see if I can make that happen.
Are you sure it doesn't need to be where Borough of Floodings is located?
It should be on that field.
Yeah, I guess. It might end in O or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, could you use the microphones when you speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Um, so that's it. I met with the tax assessor earlier this month, we're doing a tax accept property review. There's some properties that in town that do not pay taxes, they're listed as tax accept, but they are not being used for the tax accept purposes. So I've asked that Carwin to go through and review a number of properties, not just one or two, but there's a number of them that we'll be looking at and see if we can't get those properties back out the add tax rule. Because, you know, as I mentioned last night at the council, we have $67 million worth of ratables in this borough that did not pay taxes. And if they're not gonna pay taxes, they need to be used for their purpose, for their tax except purpose. On the 15th, I attended grand opening of the Chambers Unity Bank Center Annex. It's a lovely space that they have back there. I visited the Union Hotels site today at the afternoon of and they're bracing up the back. They started getting ready to excavate, so they've got this whole kind of thing going on back there. It's a lot of dirt, we have 50 trucks a day leaving this borough full of dirt. For like the next however long that's gonna be happening. I want our traffic studies that were started a couple of weeks ago by order of council vote are still undergoing. Most importantly, one of those is Stengel Road, trying to get some mid-block crosswalks in there that we want to see. And just to remind you that if you're into loud things that explode, our fireworks return to the borough for the first time in three years. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, do you have a council report? You're muted, Tony. Tony, you're muted.
Tony, you're muted.
You know, it does work if you talk when it's on, right?
Yes.
Anyway, yeah, so the HPC ordinance, we just had the first reading last night and the public hearing will be on July 11th. Changes suggested by the planning board earlier this year will be, were incorporated. Also, we are getting plans for the courthouse square relating to the crosswalk locations on Spring and Boomfield and plan to meet about it. That's what I have so far.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda, so that was three, four on the agenda, HPC. So before we go further, I want to say that the, around the HPC, we got from, and Ms. Parker just mentioned this, we got the ordinance, proposed ordinance from from the, from the borough for first reading and they're gonna do second reading, public hearing at their next meeting. We don't have a meeting between now and then. We didn't put on the agenda discussion of consistency with the ordinance and we should do that. So can I get a motion to amend the agenda to incorporate that item right now on the agenda? I guess I'm gonna.
Sure, I'll move that cut.
Is there a second?
A second, Bundy.
Thank you.
Is that all the rolls?
Yes. Hold all the rolls? To get this to amend the agenda?
Yeah, where do you want to put that?
Right now. So between count, we'll put it in lieu of HPC comments, four on the agenda.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Bundy?
Yes.
Mayor Drager?
Yes.
Mr. Daschmann?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Campion?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody. All right, so this, the, I know this was just circulated earlier today. However, this is in conjunction with the certified local government application that they want to make. And a couple of meetings ago, the chair of the HPC, maybe it was three or four meetings ago, kind of went through and reported back that everything the planning board had suggested got incorporated into this. But I haven't had a chance to read through the ordinance, so does anyone, I mean, I'm looking at that there.
I did, I had a chance to read through the ordinance. I did not get a chance to cross-check what had been suggested before, but I do have some comments based on the language.
If you could, yeah.
So.
Can you use the microphone a little bit?
Yes. Like all out of practice being in person, so. So just a couple of comments or questions. The first one is actually just a note for the council, noting that vacancies need to be filled within 60 days. Kind of like a concern, but just, you know, it's got a deadline for you folks. On page, well PDF page three, it states in here that at the bottom, it starts for applications requiring planning board review. The application shall be referred to the HPC for a written report. This, and then it goes on to state, this report shall be submitted to the planning board, which shall issue a written approval or denial, taking into account the HPC report and recommendations. And my only question, I don't know, this is not necessarily a change to the ordinance, but my question is, does that require that the planning board put findings into its resolution in regard to the contents of the HPC report?
I thought we discussed this last time.
Well, we did, but we had said that based on the fact that HPC is advisory to the planning board, as is Environmental Commission, any of our commissions, really, that, that, we can't wait or we can't. Well, we didn't want to wait until their statutory maximum, that they didn't turn it in in a timely way. That was number one, but I think Beth's point is also, must we, in our resolution of approval or denial, articulate everything that the HPC raised in its transmittal of that recommendation? Or is it, or is it adequate based on when this ordinance is written to just grant our approval or denial and not necessarily have to document how we handle the HPC stuff?
It's certainly best practice, but is the, is our resolution gonna be potentially found in fault if we don't say the HPC said X, Y, and Z and we've decided to do A, B, and C? So I'll even take it further because I don't know what taking into account means. So this could be a situation where, let's say, the planning board comes and reviews the ordinance, makes recommendations back to council, as they always do. The council must then, on second reading, make findings with regard to those recommendations or inconsistencies with the master plan, but can turn around and decide whatever it suits fit, as long as it addresses those. Does take into account mean that our decision, the planning board's decision, has to be consistent with or just reference?
I believe the words take into account would be advisory.
I, I, I would, that's the way I would lean, but I don't know what the intention was, so.
So, so we should, we should make sure that council considers that before, as in terms of adopting this, because we're being concerned.
Even if we change from shall to should, that would be helpful or best, I don't know if it needs to reference the best practice, but I'm just a little nervous if we don't reference the HPC report.
Explicitly, that we might run into a problem.
Yeah.
So the takeaway for, for Tony then to bring back, right? Because is, and, or, or do we send that back?
I think we make a recommendation.
We, we, we talk about the ordinance right now?
Yeah, in other words, that's all.
What I'm, what I'm gonna say, because this is a short timeframe, I'm gonna ask that we write this up. We'll talk about it right now, but also give an opportunity between the next, now the next council meeting for Beth to put this in writing, for Kara to put some of these things in writing. And transmit my email is fine, but I just, and circulate it to the full board, but I don't want to have to rely on Tony taking notes right now, I want, I want to be able to mark precisely that.
The way this is written, I'm taking this, is that we are obliged, we, the planning board, are obliged to issue a written report, approval or denial, based on their findings. That's how I'm reading this. This report shall be submitted to the Borough Planning Board, us, which shall issue a written approval or denial, taking into account the HPC report and recommendations.
Well, the shall issue is, is norm, is what the board does anyway. We have, our job is to adjudicate any application in front of us.
That's our approval or denial.
That's our approval process and we're not talking about.
So the resolution of approval, it would fit that.
It, it, it would.
Really, okay.
It would, but.
I would feel more comfortable if there was a should in there.
Okay, so, so let me, let me ask this, that, I'm gonna ask the mayor here. Is it possible to table second reading for two weeks?
That's why not. As long as, I mean, I imagine it's already been sent for notice by Sally, but we can continue with no further notice, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Why continue?
Only, only give us, just, just to give us an extra week here for, for Beth and Kara to kind of look at the legal and planning questions for us and then, and then our board at our next meeting to kind of have some written up notes from that, because we got this like four hours ago. And I wanted to have enough time for us to adequately respond to it. Does that, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping council could do that for us.
That's why not.
All right, what else did you notice, Beth?
So there are, there are a lot of definitions in here and there are just a couple that I have concerns about. So that, just for context, well, first, PDF page five, it states definitions. In addition to the definitions set forth in ordinance 1201, that's our terms defined section, the following definitions apply in ordinances 1404, 1405, and 1631. And so the definitions in here for building demolition and structure are different than how we define them in our zoning ordinance. And I'm just not quite clear on how to read this. If this is, if, for example, building is defined when reviewing an HPC application pursuant to this ordinance or if this is intended to supplement or replace the definition that we have in section 1201? I, I just, I'm just.
Yeah, because I remember there was some, we had some conversation on the first go at this, specifically around the question of demolition and what that meant.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want to be inconsistent in our ordinance since.
And I don't know, I just don't know whether these specific definitions are required for the CLG program. So it might make sense that these are the, the HPC definitions essentially. And then we use our building definition, our structure definition at the planning board. And that can be outlined specifically if that is the intention.
Or, or the alternative, if, if there's no CLG requirement to define them this way, we should say demolition, for this purpose, is defined as we do in 1201.
Yeah, I think that question came up last time to find out exactly how the CLG needed the definitions to be. And I don't know if we ever got an answer to that. It's not easily findable. I, and I had, I had just a couple minutes to try to find, I thought, I'll get the model CLG ordinance. This will be perfect and I'll just, I mean, it's probably somewhere, but it's not easily accessible. Let's see, and then. All of my other comments are in one category, I'll just double check. Yeah, so if you look at page. Uh, PDF page 17. That's four. Item, item G. Actually, this is the one additional item. So G1 demolition. The addition here is, see, I'm gonna pick this up hard way. While the integrity of the historic districts depend on preservation, retention, in situ of the original historic structures, the demolition or partial demolition deemed of a building structure deemed contributing or significant is generally, generally is the addition, not permitted, except where public health or safety is at risk and certified by a structural engineer or there are other reasons deemed to be crucial for the future development and prosperity of the borough.
That's a loud again.
Yeah, so I don't, the sentiment, I think, is fine, but it could really use some specificity. And then when you look at G2, it talks about applications to demolish a structure within the historic district shall be, their application shall address a number of items. And it's their historic significance, the condition, future and potential uses, et cetera. So it seems like maybe those are the items that need to be considered in the demolition. I just think these, these factors need to be tied together properly. Could just be, you know, as shown in, or as listed in item two below, you know, it could be relatively simple. And I think we need to know who makes that determination. Maybe it's clear by, if I read this in, in total, but, I mean, who decides that? Is that the borough, is that the council, is that the HPC? I think it's, it's an application to the HPC. So the HPC determines whether it's crucial for the future development and prosperity of the borough?
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah, I wanna, you know, I think that, but I, I don't want to say it for certain.
So, so I, 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 I think that, maybe I could just say this to Mr. Parker. Part of the, when, when we had concerns about the first version of this, we then we came back and then the chair of the HPC came with like a one-page summary table for us of how changes were incorporated. And basically, the, the whole table was like, yes, for this, everything you said. But we haven't, but we have not seen this actual version of the ordinance until today. And it probably would have been helpful to have had one, you know, just a little bit of notice before first reading on this, because we probably could have caught a few of these things. So if we can get these, if, if, if council could give us an extra two weeks, you think we could probably fix it? These aren't, I mean, I don't know, are these substantive enough for them to have to reintroduce? Probably not.
Well, hold on, I have one more comment.
Okay.
Yeah, and this is. Yeah, I'm not trying to slow roll the, this, but.
No, no, buildings, it says okay.
Yeah, so there is a phrase listed three times towards the end of the ordinance, beginning on page 18, actually, we're still in section G for demolition. It's the last item I, and it's one of the factors for considering demolition. It's also one of the factors for relocation out of the historic district and relocation within the borough. And it's the last item added on to these list of factors for each of these topics. It is the impact of its relocation on future development or redevelopment. And again, I think the sentiment is fine, but I think, but I'm not clear, is it the development of the site, the surrounding area, the historic district of the borough, I just think it needs some clarity.
Yeah, I think, based on, because think of like when we moved the building by two yards. Right. So the HPC's response is, you know, it's historic, you can't, you cannot move it. So I think this is giving us wiggle room, but it looks like they're the decision maker, which it, it shouldn't be based on the redevelopment. I think anything based on historic structure and anything that the HPC governs, but I don't think the HPC can make a decision on the future development or redevelopment. That's the problem. I think they were trying to say, hey, it's okay if the planning board deems, or the council deems, or any other governing body deems, that's what I think it needs to say.
So it's sort of two topics, it's who's making the decision to the extent that this is not clear and then just clarifying these list of factors.
Okay, all right, so.
But I have a question on that. So if it was, say, a building within a redevelopment area, would that override the redevelopment area designation?
Would have to specify redevelopment.
It does. No, because, because right now, our, our redevelopment plans usually specify
HPC language.
What, what, where would the role of HPC would do. We usually put that in there.
Yep.
But, but this ordinance, okay, so, but, but, but I guess, is the question then, absent, if a redevelopment plan adopted by council is silent on HPC.
Then I think.
HPC ordinance.
Then this HPC's ordinance supersedes and applies, right?
Because usually it's the, and I think it's not addressed there, so it's not the ordinance. And I think only about Union Hotels, the courthouse square redevelopment plan, I think that's, I believe that's the only redevelopment plan that specifically addresses the 1631 standards, our historic preservation ordinance, that all of the other redevelopment plans are silent on the topic, which means that it applies.
Right, and so then, then that becomes, that's another twist then of this future development or redevelopment question, because an area deemed in need of redevelopment falls into a different set of statutory.
Although, to be honest, I think an area need of redevelopment, that's probably the most clear. Because if they're, if they're moving a building in or around or someplace in order to facilitate the re, the actual redevelopment of that site, I, I feel like we can sort of easily relate it to that factor. But if it's, but if it's just a general zoning.
Yeah, but the, but the question of who makes the decision becomes, becomes critical then, right? Because, because the way that it's, because redevelopment law pulls some of that from the planning board and moves it towards governing body and this could complicate that if HPC has a delegated role.
Yeah. But the issue really is the current plans, how it's addressed, because it's this, however this is changed as the future plans are, are drafted, that can be taken into account in a case like these spaces.
Right.
So this needs to be changed for non-redevelopment and existing redevelopment plans, that however anyone adjusts the redevelopment plans on the board.
Right, so, so courthouse square mentions HPC, so the other three redevelopment plans, Beth, do you not mention the HPC at all?
I don't, I don't believe so. There, there's no, I, I don't believe there's an exemption in that for HPC.
There's not, okay, so that's, that's a, that's, that's, we're outside the district anyway, so.
Outside of the district.
They're outside the district, but.
You could still have a significant building though.
Yeah.
Outside of the district.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I'm thinking right now, it's like the depot.
Doesn't train you to go with the Aggris site.
You know, which.
Yeah.
I think we just need to review this and figure out who makes the decision, whether or not, and how that, what's with our redevelopment plans, as well as providing some clarity.
So, so Tony, are you, you, you catching all this? You're good, if, you'll hopefully be able to get council to give us an extra two weeks to give you something more definitive?
So, so I am capturing a lot of this. I'm not sure that I get a lot of this, because it's, I'm, I'm just trying to capture. So it would be helpful if, if some of this stuff was in, can be in a letter or something like that, just because I'm just trying to figure this all out. But that said, I have no problems with going back to council and saying that we need to probably give planning board a couple of weeks' extension to, to, to review this and make some decisions. Yeah, I don't.
That's, that's, that's appreciated, okay, all right.
I was just gonna say, Kara and I can coordinate on the document, a letter or memo to the, to the planning board.
It comes to the, comes to the planning board, because, because we're, because that board has to make its deter, consistency determination, we have to vote on something to go to the, to the council. So I, what I would, what I would like to see is that written up.
And do it in a resolution.
Do it in a resolution form at our next, ready for our next meeting. So that we can have, you know, finish up the discussion at our meeting on July 12th, so that then council can act at its meeting on the, what, 25th, is that the one day? Whatever that, whatever that.
Well, I don't think the council meeting.
No, but, but I don't want them to act on the 11th.
No, no, no.
I don't want them to act on the 25th, right? Yeah, that, that would be, that would make sense.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, so let's move on. Item five on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our June 14th meeting. Those have been previously circulated. Make a motion on the minutes.
So move.
Cook.
Second, Campion.
Campion seconds.
And Kara, just to clarify, even if I was refused, still, because all we're doing is looking at the accuracy of the minutes. I know that question goes up almost every time.
It's all right, yeah. Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mayor Drager?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Tony, you're muted.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna abstain.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Daschmann?
Yes, for the parts of this here. Yes.
Mr. Bundy?
Abstain.
Ms. Whitesman?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, item number six on our agenda is our completeness determination for Wordsville Road Properties LLC, excuse me, block 45 lots 11, 12, 15, 28 Parker Avenue. I see on.
Jeff, real quick, before we go into these next two.
Oh, conflicts, go.
Yeah, just want to make sure, does anyone feel that they have any direct or indirect personal or pecuniary interests that would exclude them from rendering decision on these matters and unbiases?
Okay, so. Who's counsel for Wordsville Road?
I am, I'm Robin Wright, I'm often with Karen, so why don't you come up here?
Yeah, come up there, grab a seat. What I'm gonna do is turn that, do you need to present anything or no?
Uh, not really, I can.
That's, yeah, you're not sharing anything on the screen or anything, right? Okay, you're fine. Yeah. Good.
Just point the mic a little bit toward you, so it picks up a little better.
Okay. I'm Robin Wright from Lands and Lanza. We represent Wordsville Road Properties LLC. Wordsville Road Properties owns three parcels of land in the mixed-use, multifamily, overlaid district. They're looking to subdivide the property into 19 lots and build 18 townhomes and they've applied for preliminary subdivision and site plan approval. We received Mr. Clerico's letter of June 23rd on completeness and Mr. Troutman's memo of today and we're, we're asking the board to grant those waivers that Mr. Clerico is recommending that the board grant. We're asking the board to waive a traffic impact statement based on Mr. Troutman's conclusion that the, based on NJDOT standards, this project is not going to generate a significant increase in traffic. And with respect to the rest of the items in Mr. Clerico's report, we're going to comply and we're going to supplement our application and revise our plans. And so we're just, at this point, requesting the board approve those waivers that, I can go through them if you want. 29 has to do with staging. The temporary waivers are for street names, block and lot numbers, solid waste management plan, site triangles, renderings, and signs. Site triangles, renderings and signs. And uh, we've also made Raritan, there's a small piece of this property that goes into Raritan. We have notified Mr. HR of this application. We sent him a copy of the plans. He's looking into it. And we are going to have a meeting with them uh to discuss Raritan's position.
So Bob, you've got a number of incomplete items. Here, if you could. It's a long list, three, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-eight, thirty-four, forty-two.
I tried to group them.
Yeah, so uh, they're kind of grouped up. And so your recommendation is to deem the application incomplete at this time.
For the items listed in, there was a number of requested waivers that I was recommending were not granted for their stated reasons. Not the ones that that's right.
Right, so so you're asking for us to grant the waivers and then we're gonna deem it incomplete and then they're gonna resubmit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the items that would be, if you had agreement, incomplete, the ones listed in item four and five at the end of my report.
And then we would just, um, Mr. Clerico, uh, defer to Mr. Troutman on the traffic impact statement. So I would ask that you also grant a waiver on that.
Yeah, sixty-sixty-eight is not a problem.
That was sixty-eight, that was item three.
Yeah.
I I had waivers uh for twenty-nine, temporary waivers for fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-five, sixty-seven. And sixty-nine, based on Jay's recommendation of waiver on item sixty-eight.
So the board would grant those waivers tonight, uh, or you could wait until they're resubmitted. They come back for their additional completeness review on those additional items. And then if there's any additional waivers or additional issues or action you need to take, you could take everything all at once.
Wouldn't it be, um, I mean, from an applicant perspective, if there's a recommendation to grant temporary waivers now? So they know that they have those temporary waivers and when they come back, they're only coming back that those are the grant complete or things that we denied, just looking at that.
Yeah.
Right, so um, are you, are you making a motion?
Except for, uh, hey, um, Jay's there, Jay's up there, yeah. So Jay, on and and the way that these um uh waivers go, right? We're we're waiving it from a completeness standpoint, and I just wanna say this for the for the public's application. But it doesn't negate the fact that we can still ask if we think it may be necessary during the application.
That is correct, and and also during my technical comments, I will, for the board's benefit. Out outline the traffic impact, the trip generation impact, which is not significant, but I will, I will have those numbers in my technical comments.
Okay, I I because that comes up a lot, and I think when we waive something, anything to do with traffic, I think it's. I I just wanted to make sure that it's still on the docket, we can still talk about it, or waiving it for completeness.
Okay.
So if it, sorry.
No, no.
I should make a motion.
Make a motion, no, no, it sounds, it sounds like what Todd is suggesting, correct me if I'm wrong. It sounds like that Todd is um uh making a motion to deem the application incomplete. But also to grant a number of waivers, is that correct?
And can that be done at the same time?
Sure.
And it, okay, yes, so so yeah.
In essence, everything that you do with this and the next completely will all be put together.
Okay.
But you could do part of it now and part of it later, so that's.
So yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we uh deem the application incomplete. Um, but at the same time, grant the requested waivers for checklist items number twenty-nine, the temporary waivers. Fifty-six, fifty-seven, sixty, sixty-two, sixty-five, sixty-seven, sixty-nine.
And grant the.
And and the waiver for item number sixty-eight, which we just discussed. And um, do I have to talk about denying the request for waivers in this part?
Well, we're.
You're very, you're saying you're. Because we're incomplete, we're, so we're, so at this point, we're, it's incomplete with the um, the temporary waivers as outlined above.
Correct, and the applicant has represented to the board that they will satisfy the items that uh Bob has recommended. The waivers that he's recommending deny and provide the additional.
Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Budney, seconds.
Alright, any further discussion?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Dastan?
Yes.
Ms. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Right, uh, item seven on our agenda this evening is another completeness determination. Tibbetts NJ LLC, block thirty-eight, lot one dot oh one, one forty-four Main Street.
Good evening, um, Aaron Colton, I represent Tibbetts NJ LLC. Uh, Skylar Bird, um, managing member of Tibbetts, is here with me this evening. Uh, we're here on um, of the same matter as the last application seeking completeness review. Or determination completeness of the application for preliminary final um site plan. We are in receipt of Mr. Clerico's uh June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two uh review letter on the application. And I'm prepared to represent the board this evening. We'll be seeking uh first um the uh waivers that uh Mr. Clerico has recommended. Along with a grant of conditional partial waiver subject to the uh submission of of additional information. Which um, we're prepared to represent this evening. Our uh architect is uh prepared to to submit um following this meeting. So anything that Mr. Clerico um reviewed and deemed the application incomplete. We're indicating that we will uh submit the necessary information uh for Mr. Clerico's review. So that it will be incomplete, so we're not object with anything that Mr. Clerico suggested.
Alright, so fairly straightforward to get as well. So uh, what we are looking for then is for, so I'm gonna make a motion to grant a conditional partial waiver for items thirty-six, forty-four, fifty-five. Waivers for forty-two, forty-seven, fifty-two, sixty-two and sixty-eight. Because Jay's note says that he's okay granting a waiver for sixty. I'm sorry, yes, yes.
Yes, correct. And then the applicant has presented that they will set, they will provide the additional information uh for those items that are.
Right, do I have someone? Oh, that's so moved, Cook.
Driver, second.
Alright, any further discussion?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Driver?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Dastan?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Levitt?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I will say, if if the board sees fit, since here we're not dealing with any um waivers that were essentially denied. If the applicant submits the information to Bob and Bob tells the board that the items have been checked off and are complete. The board is free if it sees fit to schedule a hearing and then do completeness and hearing at the same time, if that makes sense. I don't know how things are gonna work out, but if we want to, you know, to schedule a lot.
I would love for us to move this forward if we can, so.
So that's, that's my thought. If Bob could say, I received all these items, I would recommend the board deem it uh complete. And we could schedule a complete.
If you can complete this out in hearing on the same night.
Right.
That'd be great, because like I said, Bob, these these letters are are a work of art, I just have to say, they really are.
Very big color coordinate.
No, because when you think of something, no, when you think of something that is administrative, right? In 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 purpose, right? That so all you're doing is looking to see if they put these items in the application. The only caveat, the board, if you're going to do this, purposefully, I know what you're gonna do. It just needs to be a a an agreed upon amount of time. All the information comes in in advance of the date the applicants. And even at the coordinate that I leaned in back to board is having a meeting, is something getting canceled, which.
Well, I wouldn't even recommend that way, because we've kind of gotten tied up with that before.
Yeah.
What I'm saying more is more along the lines of, Aaron submits all the information to Bob. Bob takes whatever time he has to review it. Bob says on July fifteenth, I've received everything, I've reviewed it, you can deem it complete. Then from there, whatever meeting was next, based on notice requirements and timing and this and that, then it can be scheduled for that. I think that's the cleaner way and doesn't put us in the same situation.
Typically, I would, Beth would be the same way. I I wouldn't start it at the technical view to the other information needed, so just doing the C was good.
Yeah, that that makes sense. Yeah, I would say, yeah, we could do that, that would be great. So yeah, as soon as we give that in, we'll we'll keep moving.
Perfect, thank you.
Alright.
Thank you professionals. Any questions about something, how to, they're free to call.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eight on our agenda this evening is the continuation of the public hearing for Captiva Main Street LLC. Block five, lots one and two, continue from March eighth, twenty-second, April twelve, May twenty-fourth and June fourteenth. We're actually going to continue that. Couple of board members aren't here, and we also are working on some other stuff in terms of potential conditional conditions and things like that. So we're gonna continue that to our next meeting, July twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, seven PM. In this room and online, no further notice will be provided. Okay, we are up to item nine, share items. I have a few things, our next meeting is July twelfth, so we're gonna have Captiva continuing. This Captiva started before Family Promise, they should probably go first on the agenda. Family Promise has been continued to that as well. I don't think we're gonna get either of these two applications, obviously those are, we have to deal with it off. I will say that there is out there. Courthouse Square is gonna have an amendment to their site plan, so that's, I don't think it's happening.
They're close to.
They're close, so they may come in, they may be completeness for the twelfth, maybe.
That's only two weeks away.
There you go, okay, maybe not.
I don't think that gives Bob much time.
Alright, so not.
I don't, they're not that close.
They're not that close, okay, so they're not that close.
There's not enough lightning fireworks.
Two fireworks. Um, so that's, that's out there and it's coming. There was a question of how many copies of of that, that they needed, physical copies. Because technically they have to comply with the full twenty-five, and that's ridiculous. It's like, we don't, we've done most of it digital. So I, unless there, unless someone's got a strong feeling, I'll leave that to the five. One for Eileen, one for the public view, one for Bob. And then a couple of extras floating around in case people want hard copies.
Did you want a hard copy, Beth? No.
And then the rest would be digital.
I'm, we're requesting electronic copies, it says never, never, okay, yeah.
I know, I'm sarcastic, I understand, but I never want it, okay, yeah.
Counsel, I mean, obviously counsel needs a copy, but check and see if, mayor's saying that I need a hard copy, but.
They're going, they're going to be, I I've already requested from electronic and a roll.
So if the, sadly, we want, we need a hard copy from counsel.
Well, five will will do it. Beth doesn't want any, Karen doesn't want any, I don't know, I'll check with, oh, Jay is here, so.
Did you, do you wanna change a bit with the?
I I I actually need a hard copy, because I sometimes play with truck turning templates on big pieces of paper.
Okay, so that's actually, five is perfect.
Five is fine. Yeah, public, you, counsel, there's a bunch of years, okay, good. That's that. Uh, I wanna thank Beth for submitting a uh first draft of existing conditions for the master plan to the subcommittee. And so uh, we we need a subcommittee meeting. I don't know, Susan's out of town, I don't know when Susan's getting back. But I'd like to do that maybe next week or the week after, you know, if we can. Are you traveling?
Next week, yes. The week after, no. The week after that, yes.
Yes, you're home or yes, you're traveling.
So the week, the week after next is the only week I'm here in July.
So that would be the week of July thirteen.
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
So we have a meeting on the fourteenth. Uh, we have a meeting on the twelfth, you're sorry. We have a meeting on the twelfth, that week you're around. Yes, okay, so maybe we can find some time in there. Alright, Hannah, does that work for you, first meeting?
I'm chained here, so yes, you're good, I need to.
Oh.
Anything, um, alright.
On the um, on the twelfth, though, I I am gonna be absent on the twelfth, unfortunately. No, no, I was, I, July is a is a tough month, but uh, but.
Oh, wait, can we have a subcommittee meeting on the twelfth?
Uh, we have a full.
We have a full meeting on the, on on the twelfth, but I I can't make the.
That one, he's not there that day, but that week, yes, yes. Okay, so that's something else I've got. Uh, other thing I wanna mention is Beth and the mayor and I had a quick conversation, quick meeting. Uh, earlier today, um, about a small zoning change to the downtown business zone. Stuff that's been recommended in prior master plan and updates and things like that. The prop, we're talking, we're talking about properties of the north edge of the, of Main Street that are functioning as DBs. But there's own PO, professional office and just to. To allow for businesses at the north end to do a little bit more um with their properties to get to 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 DB. So that's, there's a, we were sketching it out, it's, it's no more than a dozen parcels at most, I think it might be, maybe it's less than that. But but yeah, a minor thing, so it's an ordinance change, so it's gonna, it's gonna go to council and then come to us, I'm just putting it on folks' radar. This is something that was talked about five years ago, it just never quite got, uh, so.
Yeah, I have a question. Uh, you're talking about properties that were both PO, north end. Because I think we have the same, I know Susan and I, we participated with the SCP, we were walking the south end.
Yeah.
And and I, you know, I didn't have a chance to to review my notes, to see how that's zone, because I was all residential.
South end is T R, is a PO down there.
No, so and we were, because we were questioning, we wanted to look back at my old master plans to see if the T R is still.
Well, that's different, that's a different question.
Different, I know, but we only use, when you said it had been an old master plan, so I think we have a lot of things in master plans, that would be.
Yeah, no, it's, my in the main street is all this T R. So yeah, it just, just putting it on everyone's radar, it's a minor thing that will just kind of make it a little easier for some of the property owners of the North End Main Street. Encourage active use of the rest of the, good stuff like that. Um, and that's what I've got under share items. Um, anybody have anything else?
We did have a uh, a letter um requesting a, an extension of approvals for the, for Main Street that came in um last, first on today, so.
That's uh.
That's from Sheriff, yes.
Yes, so do you?
They did submit a, an escrow check, so uh, we just need to find it, you know, it's two weeks to find it. Just need to, to schedule that.
Okay.
But it just came in today, so I I, it's it's coming.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because next meeting is full.
Yes.
The twenty-sixth or twenty, um, sorry, the uh. Yeah, the twenty-sixth of July, I'm not here, but I think the rest of the board is, so there might be room there.
Okay.
But maybe August.
When is the extension expire? I mean, it doesn't matter, we can retroactively apply it.
I do not know, um, I think it has already. But I don't know if there's a, you'd have to take a look at it.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, uh, were there any bills?
I got a late submission of bills today, but I, there was um some problems with the the PDF, so I have them, but I I did not have time to.
Don't worry about it, we'll do it next time.
People wouldn't have had a chance to.
It's all good, we'll do it next time. Professional reports, Kara?
No.
Bob?
No.
Deb?
No.
Jay, you have anything from the shore?
I don't, thank you.
Alright, any need to go to executive session? May blush to adjourn.
Really?
Second.
On favor? Thank you. I know.
Bob, I get a quick question.